Okay, it's seven o'clock and the call is meeting in order, please join me in the flex. Oh, we will call.
Counselor Eager.
Eric.
Counselor Asoregon.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Hott.
Here.
Counselor Hopper.
Here.
Counselor Fallow.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wall.
Here. Thank you. Have any guests or? And no interested citizens?
No, nobody knows that.
All right then, we're gonna, any correspondence? Nope, okay. And move on to the quarterly department reports that were in your packets. You have any questions of those reports? Since Counselor Paul raised his hand.
I had it. I guess the, I had three comments on that I have questions. So one is the comment in the finance report regarding that fortunately, the ARPA funds are likely not going to cover costs outside of just engineering for the generator or the natural power. And staff discussed the possibility using these funds to pave around the town instead. Is that something that we can discuss energy business?
Sure.
Next comment was chief on your emergency calls, your percentage had changed. I think we should double check that before the next update. Unless I'm misunderstanding, unless I'm misunderstanding the math. I think our percentage change isn't, isn't accurate. Like the inputs, right, but the percentage isn't, isn't there? And who's actually take that back, I want that two comments or no? Yes, I only had two comments on that, sorry. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? No, okay. And we'll move on to item number eight, review accounts payable, and we have accounts payable reports. And also the quarter two. Now we're gonna go around the room. Ask if anyone has any questions and I'll start with Counselor Hopper.
Yeah, two questions. One is, are we closed out with West Tech now based on this invoice?
We probably have at least one or two more buildings for the self. Stop the wireline, okay?
And then on the fund summary, and Terrence, excuse me, I'm still trying to learn these fund summaries. I had two questions, one was based on it being a six month report, I know said the admin is at seventy. Is, is, I, was it safe to assume that's because of when things hit the budget and not, we're not monthly going over every month?
Right.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. And then I noticed we have a housing rehabilitation fund. I was curious what those funds are.
Who wants to take that on?
I can take that. It's the HUD loans that we do. So anybody can apply for a twenty thousand dollar interest free loan. They're under certain income limits and their house needs repaired. Apply for that.
And that was funded by grants years ago.
Yeah.
Years ago.
I think that was like six or seven.
No, earlier. Well, I think we had three different grants for grants that we just continually roll over.
Well, at the risk of being embarrassed despite being here a year, I just, I had never noticed it before, so I was curious what it was eligible for, so thank you.
Counselor Asoregon, any questions or?
I actually had the same question about the housing rehabilitation fund too. Like, I don't remember reading that before and I was like, what is that? Hey. You answer.
It's making me feel better, sir.
I know, I was like, I was like.
Counselor President Eager.
I'm good.
He's good, and I'm good, so. Oh, I'm adequate. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, we have one item. The minutes of the January second, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Any questions or corrections? Not, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Counselor Hopper. Second by Counselor Fallow. Agenda, hold call please.
Aye.
Counselor Fallow.
Aye.
Counselor Eager.
Aye.
Counselor Hopper.
Aye.
Counselor Asoregon.
Aye.
Counselor Donahue.
Aye.
Counselor Hott.
Aye.
Mayor Wall.
Aye. Okay. We are going to move on to item ten. And we're going to hold a public hearing on our housing needs analysis. I have to read the statement, it's way too long, but. But I'll do it anyway, so. On the agenda is a public hearing to consider proposed legislative amendments to to manage a comprehensive plan adopting the two thousand twenty three housing needs analysis. City case file LA two oh two three oh one. This is the second of two public hearings. First public hearing was held on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty four before the Mount Angel Planning Commission. Section two of the Mount Angel Development Code identifies procedures for type four legislative actions. The decision before the city council is a decision to adopt the found findings and proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan identified in the staff report and supporting exhibits advance the proposal to the first reading of an implementing ordinance. At this time, I will ask the council to declare any conflict of interest bias or prejudice. Ding none. I will ask those attending tonight if there are any objections to the notice of, for this hearing. The jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter the impartiality of any member of this body. Hearing none. All issues relative to this proposal must be raised prior to the close of the record or following this hearing. All issues must be raised with sufficient specificity to allow this body and the parties to this hearing an opportunity to respond to the issue. Failure to raise an issue at this hearing precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that nature. The decision by the city council shall be based on consideration of the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use and housing elements of the Mount Angel Comprehensive Plan as well as compliance with Oregon statewide planning laws. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy that you believe applies to the proposal. Section two point four of the Mount Angel Development Code describes the legislative hearing process. Hearing process. We have this presentation of the staff report and other applicable reports. The public shall be invited to testify. Staff shall be invited to comment on testimony or evidence presented. Public hearing may be continued to another hearing date to allow additional testimony or it may be closed. And the body's deliberation may include questions to staff, comments from the staff, or inquiries directed to any person present. And we are now ready for oral presentation and summary of the staff report, so I will open it up for a staff report on this issue.
All right, thank you for that, this is Kurt Fisher, he's our, our contract.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for that very deliberate reading of those required openings to make sure that we follow all the required procedures. There was staff report, did a good job summarizing the process. This is the second of two required public hearings. It's more of a formality, but that's the process that we're going to go through at the end of this hearing. Close the record, the decision for you will be as explained to adopt the findings that are in the, in the report in the summary of the housing needs analysis prepared by the consultants work on the product. And adopt the amendments described in the, in the work in the comprehensive plan. Those items for first reading of the draft ordinance, which is also in your packet and should be the next item on the agenda this evening. So beginning on page thirty six are the required findings for the staff report. They generally track the description provided by the consultants describing the work that they conducted in the years two thousand twenty two and. They conducted their work, but the final adoption process wasn't included in their scope of work they wrapped up before it could actually be adopted and incorporating their work officially into the comprehensive plan. So that's what we're here tonight to, to finish up. The purpose of the housing needs analysis, it's a required element of the comprehensive plan, the purpose is to ensure that we have evidence to document that we can meet our residential land needs for the next one years. And those findings are included in the summary report prepared by a consultant that's in exhibit exhibit A. That, the substantive elements of that report will replace the housing element that's currently in the comprehensive plan, the pages that it will replace are included in exhibit C, you can see that they're quite outdated, so this will update this element of the comprehensive plan with current population projections, current billable lands inventory related to housing products. And that will be incorporated as a, as a appendix, so once the comprehensive plan is amended, you'll see a placeholder in that chapter and then that will, and then that report will be adopted as a supporting document. And then once that's done and we're done with this process, the information in there will be available for use by city staff, planning commission, this body to make informed, evidence-based decisions regarding housing policy decisions going forward, both, both many elements are advisory, they're not mandatory, they're meant to help you make the decisions regarding housing over the next one years. Others will be the basis of certain applications that are brought forth by, by applicants. One common scenario is if a, if a applicant comes in and they want to change his own, that's in its own, that's dedicated for residential use to some other use, they have to provide documentation that the city can still meet its housing needs after that zone change was approved, so there's a few different uses for the document. In addition to incorporating that summary report in the housing element of the comprehensive plan, there are a few policy recommendations that are also buried in that summary, summary report, so those also are included in, I think it's exhibit B. In a strikeout format, but that picked the, the, the updates to the, those, those comprehensive plan policies. Generally, they appear as recommendation, recommended by the consultant, the policy recommendations that they came up with based on the, based on the, the public process that they went through. There were a few minor changes that planning commission recommended to just, I think they, I think their recommendations only affected three specific policies. They were very, very, very minor, they didn't substantially change the, the policy goals of those, of those policies in any substantial ways, so those are the recommendations that are reflected in the in the legislative amendment to those policies. With that, I will conclude my staff report and remain up here. Any questions, any, anybody has?
Okay.
Why are you smiling at me?
I have an expectation with it, but I'm gonna go around because I think maybe several of us might have, and so I'm gonna start with Counselor Hopper. Anything at this time?
Not much time.
Hey, Counselor Fallow?
I have some questions, but it's unfortunate, so if I'm following this correctly, you didn't do the report, so you might not have the specifics.
The actual.
The actual background report that the consultant did, okay.
Correct. Those, yeah, the, the process for that is too close.
Okay, well, that's, that's gonna be a lot less interesting then, because I had a couple of questions, so I am gonna ask one question, maybe you know this. So looking at the population trends, the, the highest rate of growth ever was the, oh, just over three quarters of a percent, and we're looking at one point three eight, do you know where they got that number from?
The Population Research Center at the Portland State University.
Oh, yeah, that's what we said previously.
So that's the.
So they're aggressive, aren't they? Okay, I was just curious, it's nearly, it's nearly double what we've ever seen, so I was just curious where the number came from.
Yeah, so the, so the legislature made them kind of the official record, record holder for population projections, so that's what's called the safe harbor, so when you, when, when we're doing these updates, we have a choice of following what's called a safe harbor, which is using those population numbers, and as long as we use those, then they can't be challenged.
Understood.
There are, there are other ways that you can accumulate other data, but it has to be justified, so it tends to be leaving your involved cost. Due to population projection, the result basically based on your own.
Understood, it, it, it piqued my interest and obviously it piqued other people's interest, it piqued it enough to put it in the newspaper, so. So, the, the one that I would like to discuss removing or modifying prior to any, any voting, and I don't think I'm the only one in the room, is so I went through here and obviously finding eleven on page five says Mount Angel shall amend its zoning and subdivision ordinance, but the minimum lot size is low density of six thousand instead of current. I'll be honest, I went through this report in some relatively great depth and I did not find any information that supported that, based on the, based on everything I read, based on our current zoning, we would still meet our needs. And maybe I misunderstood that, but I didn't find anything in there that said to accomplish our goals, that is why we should draw.
So that is actually one of the things that finding commission was interested in, the recommended, the recommended change was to change that to five thousand square feet. And six thousand square feet is what is currently.
So. Knowing.
That's, so that's existing policy. So that, again, that is not, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how carefully they considered that policy when they recommended it, but to adopt that policy as ordered right now is maintaining status quo.
So. And I'm personally not interested in a citywide adjustment at this time until we consider some other things. We have a lot of design standards in this town to protect how the town looks. I know when I drew my house, David, when you draw all your houses, your garage can't extend beyond the front of your house. You know, we have stuff like that. And without amending some of our design standards or amending our setbacks, I'm worried as to what kind of housing that would lead to. And I'll just kind of leave it at that, and so.
So, just, and I think a lot of people are, are get hung up on this, these, these policies aren't mandatory, so they're not, they're not binding. Those policies have to be, have to be implemented through an update to the development code, so they have to be implemented to an actual code update, so there's nothing, so a developer can't ask to be renewed under that policy.
Right, not yet, but when I, when I, when I'm reading something that I'm voting on and it says we shall amend, which means at some point the expectation is we absolutely will amend. I think that it should be changed to say Mount Angel may amend or remove the binding in, in full based on the fact that there's, you know, supporting information.
So at the end of the report, at the end of the report, there's a couple suggestive motions, so you can certainly include that amendment in your, in your motion and proceed on the emotion. Leave a, a motion to amend those or adopt as amendments.
Let me ask a little clarification on that issue. So you're, right now, our, our standard is six, not seven, is that correct?
No, it's seven.
It's seven, okay. So. In my experience, our ordinances have to comply with our comprehensive plan, correct? The comprehensive plan is supreme over our ordinances, isn't that correct?
That's right.
So. What this is saying, if we adopt this finding, is that at some point we shall change our ordinance requirements, correct? Because comprehensive plan prevails. Am I right, Lauren?
Not as, not as approval criteria, no, it has to be implemented through the zoning code. So what that, what that policy does is it supports an action to make that amendment. So that would, so if, if, if you did take the step to actually change that standard in the zoning code, that policy would support that change.
Okay.
But until that happens, it's not going to be.
Okay.
So that would take us.
But if I'm Joe Developer and I come in and I want to do a subdivision and I want six thousand square foot lots, I can challenge your ordinance to say it's not in compliance with your comprehensive plan if we adopt this. That's an argument I think someone could make.
So it, it's very clear in law that, that comprehensive plan policies are not approval criteria, so that's, that's pretty well established.
I guess.
Scenario, the scenario where this would come into play is for instance, if somebody wanted to do a PUD, planning unit development and be reviewed under, and go smaller in lot size for the exchange you're providing another public benefit, they could cite that policy as support of, in that, of that request.
Okay.
So that's one scenario that it, that it, that it would come into play or perhaps support a variance, but it wouldn't, but it wouldn't, that policy wouldn't be binding.
Okay.
But you're correct, is, is, I'm still, I'm still having some, the expectation is that the expectation is that at some point.
Well, at some point, and our ordinance, we should.
Correct.
Where, we shall vote into this.
Yep.
Make that change. And so that's, I guess that's what I'm hung up on here.
Well, it's, it's the, it's the status quo, it's been the policy and it hasn't, and the city hasn't acted on it in since eighty one, yeah.
Okay, I get, all right, I, I just.
No, I shared Mayor Wall's sentiment, I think. I guess we're just, he's trying to protect the city from either litigation, I'm assuming, or, or. Or even somebody coming in and saying, like how you said, we're gonna do them in smaller lot sizes. And we don't have to, like you said, provide the public benefit of something else somewhere else. Because they said, well, this is a recommended policy in comprehensive plan, but it's not in ordinance. So I think that's correct me if I'm wrong, was your assumption?
I just, I just. I, I think that and I've always been thought that your ordinances need to comply with the comprehensive plan. And where they don't, you need to change them to make sure they comply with the comprehensive plan, to implement a comprehensive plan, isn't that the way it works? That's.
And correct me if I'm wrong too, but with this comprehensive plan, is it to not only expand our tax base, I'm, I'm assuming it's to maximize the, if not the efficiency, but the amount of people we can put in, in a certain space?
Uh, citywide, within the urban growth boundary.
So.
Not in a specific.
I'm not saying you wanna put a fish in a barrel, I'm not saying that, but pretty darn close. Because I, I feel with that six, the six to seven thousand foot, that's kind of, I look, that's how I look at it, you're almost, it's gonna be like a fish in a barrel type thing, you're just let's cram more with less space.
It's very unusual to see such a prescriptive policy in a complex.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's very unusual, like I said, it is the status quo. But I think I'm speculating, but I suspect that everyone assumed that the, that the policy was acceptable to the city since it's, that's been the policy for so long, but it is, it is very unusual to see such a specific policy in a comprehensive plan, there's, the goals are supposed to be broader and, and allow more leeway for the city to implement the policy in a multitude of ways other than just adopt a very specific objective than a lot size standard.
Okay, I, that makes me feel better. But, yeah, I just you know, I, you do a comprehensive plan for a purpose and you want your ordinances to comply with the comprehensive plan.
That's, it would be a very, I, as you're speaking as your planner, it would be a very prudent move to either strike that policy or amend it to be more as you said, strike, change shall to may, that means that there's, it makes it clear that it's not, absolutely not mandatory, but if you did want to at some point permit.
And then it bases for that decision.
You have, that you would have support.
And I would, you know, when we get to adopt this, I would support changing that shall to may because it's, it, you know, legally, it has, it holds water. And so. And I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I mean, I think lower lot sizes increase affordable housing and I'm very supportive of affordable housing, but I just want our ordinances to comply with our comprehensive plan primarily, so. I'll just stop at that.
I, I agree, so I just wanted it to be more in-depth conversation around maybe in some locations or in limited quantities, but to, to open the entire town up to that lot size standard was, was something to me.
Unrealistically, if the planning commission received an application for a subdivision at some point and there were, well, not much slope in Mount Angel, but if there were drainage issues or other physical issues, they're not gonna be able to approve six thousand square foot lots. They're not going to be able to approve six thousand square foot lots anyway, correct? I mean, if there are some development.
Yeah, so the code, and so the code has some options for dealing with that scenario. Variance is one of them and P U D.
Correct.
Application that I described before, which basically allows uh more flexibility with certain objective criteria. In exchange for set inside natural areas.
Right.
And that sort of thing, protecting steep slopes.
Great, thank you. And I, I love P U Ds if they're done right, so. Okay.
I I agree with maybe changing the language, but as far as. A six thousand square foot lot being buildable and presentable and meeting all the standards. I had a sixty one hundred and five square foot lot on Sheridan Street that I was a detached single car garage, but. The house looks like, you know, it's the city and all those requirements. I mean, it is possible and it was a nice P U D at St. Mary's Circle, but I don't think. I I mean, it's been there for. Twenty some years and I think all those residents really enjoyed it and they have some. Lots that are considerably smaller than six thousand square feet, so. Uh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's 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 possible to meet the city standards and have a six thousand foot lot, but.
But we already have an opportunity for variance in big city weight and circumstances. That's the way I understand it, correct?
Oh, again, going through a P U D, where are you?
No, I I mean, I'm I'm fine with the seven thousand, I'm just saying, it can't be done. It's not like six thousand. Unbelievable, just hanging in the shacks.
Okay, do you have any other questions, Councilor Storey?
No.
Also, Art.
So so when does this come back to us again? In what year?
So.
Timeline?
You're not big enough yet to be subject to periodic review, to mandatory periodic review, so it'd be when you. When when you decide you want to update the. Update that section of the comprehensive.
So it could be twenty years?
Twenty years.
Many years?
Twenty years is a standard for periodic review if you're over, if you have a population of over ten thousand.
Okay, I I I did, I'll do it for you.
Do cities use this for. Infrastructure purposes as well?
Uh for. In the front of the means, yeah.
Okay, that's just.
Yeah, there's a big difference between, you know, a low density zone.
Right.
Seven thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, cause it'll look like we're gonna grow anywhere from a thousand to eleven hundred residents. The next twenty years, so that's obviously gonna put a tax system. So we need to start, I'm just throwing ideas out here now. Start pointing to that as well.
But the same population numbers that Civil West is gonna use on on master plans.
So if we use up all of our buildable land before these twenty years comes up, then we have to bring this back center?
Correct, if you want to expand your U G B.
Yeah.
If you want to do a U G B expansion, you need to demonstrate that you need.
I mean, you always got to be proactive, so there's, you know, you gotta be ahead of the ball instead of getting behind it.
Yep.
So and I'm gonna make a point for everyone on. If we, if something significant happens, a significant change over what this is. Uh, for example. I I personally think the there'll be more demand for multifamily housing. If we get a lot, and I think the plan said thirty or sixty units or something. If we had one large one, which has actually been discussed. We can change this plan and change our projections if that should happen, so it's not. It's not a static document. It's not intended to be a static document.
Correct, and if you want to.
Initiate our own.
Right, we could, we could. If something happened this year, we said we want to revisit this, we could, so it's not, it's not cash and slime. Okay. So, Councilor, do you have any other?
No, I'm good.
Yeah. Okay, then. Uh. I want to open this to any testimony if anyone wants to address their counsel. Hey, hey? Anyone visiting through Zoom want to ask any questions? Okay. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we will, council will begin deliberations. And we will not take any more public testimony unless we choose to reopen the hearing. So there, now. And we'll move on to item B, which is the implementing ordinance number seven seventy six. You have any comments on that?
So you have to uh. Hold the public hearing. Uh make a motion to adopt. Signify. Conduct the public hearing.
I just did a public hearing. Yeah, well, we're gonna discuss it, yes. I know we'll have a motion.
Do that according to.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to uh adopt ordinance number seven seventy six then.
Uh I would move to adopt ordinance seven seventy six, finalizing the housing needs analysis. And amending the Mount Angel Comprehensive Plan with the following changes. Section one staff report uh to be amended with the removal of policies finding number.
Removal of entirely, or? Okay.
I guess it's the same as we.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by council. Motion by Council Foul, seconded by Council Yonagui. To adopt resident uh ordinance with the removal of section, what is that?
Policies finding number eleven within the staff report.
Policy finding number eleven with the staff report. Okay, is there any council discussion on that? Councilor. Over?
Well, I just, do we need? Do we need to have the finding this naming at minimum lot size? It's gonna be striking the whole of.
Currently on living remain, right?
Like I said, it's very, it's very unusual that we have.
Okay.
Don't go and ask, say.
This is what.
Yeah, because there's, because there's already a code around it, we're just shrinking it from the comprehensive way.
I think giving more flexibility in future to.
Hey, comment, Councilor Storey?
Uh, yes.
Um, no. Also. I have none, so I. I guess with that, is there any other discussion about the other part of the ordinance? Okay, then I'm gonna call for, no call please.
Counselor Ah.
Hi.
Counselor Hill.
Hi.
Counselor Fow.
Hi.
Counselor Edger.
Hi.
Counselor Hooper.
Hi.
Counselor Sorgen.
Hi.
Counselor Donkey.
Hi.
Mayor Wall.
Hi. Okay, these, that was first reading, correct? Yeah.
Correct.
We will have this as a second reading at our March meeting. Okay. So our next item is item ten C, which is our fee schedule. It's resolution fifteen eighty five. Have any staff comments on this that that we'd like to make or talk about? Sorry, did you want to say?
No, I, well, other than I noticed that. The S D Cs are highlighted red, but there was no change from last time. The only thing that should have changed. And it is changing is the staff time per hour for the use of the facilities.
So we're changing the staff time per hour?
Yep, I had, I had T V D.
T V D, cause.
We didn't know and we did some calculations and came up with forty bucks now.
Then it used to be twenty five?
We didn't have it.
We didn't have it, okay.
Cause we changed our facility use rules. To not allow people to rent this room without access to the bathrooms because of liability issues.
Okay. So our staff went from zero to forty, just like that, so.
The relation.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments? And I'll entertain a motion.
I move to currently attached resolution and helping master schedule for services provided by the city in Mount Angel. Second.
Okay. Motion by Council Yonagui, second, seconded by. Council Hooper to adopt resolution fifteen eighty five. No call please.
Counselor Donkey.
Hi.
Counselor Ah.
Hi.
Counselor Hill.
Hi.
Counselor Fow.
Hi.
Counselor Edger.
Hi.
Counselor Hooper.
Hi.
Counselor Sorgen.
Hi.
Mayor Wall.
Hi. And motion carries. I will move on to the city manager's report.
Counselor, um, just kind of revisit uh some of the comments that I made last month. The city hall flooring project has turned out really cool, very, very nice. Um, which has allowed us to kind of retool and for efficiency in our operation in city hall. Um, to include uh giving Colby his own office. So he can actually do his job and do it in a manner which is uninterrupted and. Um, well, times before than that, especially Colby. Um, and I hope to have him out of the information booth, uh if not this week. Uh maybe next week, but anyway, the sooner the better. So that Colby doesn't have to go back and forth between the info booth and city hall. So we can be a cohesive team once again, and that includes me um getting more of my stuff upstairs. So you shall see me upstairs in city hall, just a little bit more than what you're seeing previously. Um, we still have a variety of projects, as I mentioned last time. Um, although Ellen told me at the eleventh hour just before we started council tonight that we do have. Our three bids on the uh. Uh pavement grind and overlay project near the fountain, near the river crossing, so we've got our three bids now. Um, but Ellen and I haven't had some opportunity to talk more about that. Um, still waiting to hear from the railroad actually about the grant opportunity that we have the ability to partner with. Um. And then the south main waterline project is nearly a hundred percent done. Uh I think they've got to do some trimming around the valves or something magical with the pavement. Uh to make sure that the valve will all even and everything opens and closes correctly.
That and they um they grind notches in the valve cans to show the direction of the water mains.
Okay.
Yes. And then a ball uh baller around hydrant at Napa.
Um, I will tell you that at Oak and Church, I have heard from O D A. And I am moving ahead with one of the solutions suggested by console, and that's all I'm gonna say about that pronounced. And I met with one of the aides from Senator Wyden's office, I think I mentioned this during our work session. For the possibility of obtaining funds for projects. Um, they offered us a lot of other services that are just kind of cool, cool things that. Senator does uh for communities and individuals that are employed by city government. Um, I think it's a really good start to a relationship, particularly information sharing with. One of their, they're, they're really helping us as much as they can, so I look forward to strengthening that. And I know the Senator Merkley's office is also interested, so I should be meeting with one of his aides relatively soon. Uh there's some grant opportunities that I'll be uh looking into very, very shortly. Other than that, uh staff and I stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
The city hall looks okay, we don't have to fill.
It looks good. If you can actually breathe in the city hall now. Um, all, you know, all that carpet is is gone. Um, the painting was done by our employees. The wall building was done by our employees. Um, so we really, all of us have pitched in one way or another. To take it maybe a little bit a step further to to improve our, at least our pride of office. Um, pride in our workspace. Um, and so. Hopefully it'll last a little while, but you know, it's still not um sound for the for the big earthquake. So we still have those civil concerns. Uh it's still an old building, but city paid six thousand five hundred dollars for it.
You pay us another one?
Yeah, do it, do that again. I have to say, it does look uh. I heard that it was nicer and that when I, the first time I went in, it was, it's beautiful. It really, compared to what it's been for. A long time, it really looks nice and professional and it seems like a, so kudos to everyone who worked on it.
It is, it is a team sport and some, some members of the team have have done more than others. There, like I said, last meeting, we've been rock stars. Um, you know, I, she and I planned on coming in and painting on New Year's Day, you know? And I had a little homicide that I had to deal with, unfortunately, I wasn't much help, but. She's really done amazing job in organizing that. But it has been a team effort. And every member of the team has been involved one way or another, so. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, but it makes a difference. Be able to come to work in some place that you have a little bit of pride in makes a difference.
Makes sense. Okay, is that it? Any other questions, our city manager?
Um, I know you haven't fully vetted them. Um, but based on the three bids, just your cursory lands. Um, would it be possible to complete that work with the remaining apartments?
What are, what are the three bids?
Well, the lowest one's thirty two change.
Oh.
Yeah.
How much?
Thirty two thousand to change?
Yeah. And where does it go from?
Um, well, the bid I got today was. Fifty seven, and it goes down to. Thirty eight.
Well, what what were the physical boundaries that you outlined for them?
Oh, uh so fifteen feet on each side of the track, including the center of the tracks, and then there was a couple. Nasty potholes on the outside of those that I included in that as well. So it's not, not the whole entire intersection, but. Majority of it. The worst of the problems.
You know I want to do more than that.
What's that?
You're giving me the look, you know I want to do more than that.
You know?
I'm hoping to do crosswalk to crosswalk to the highway, to the highway. If if at all possible. Or, you know, at least fairly, fairly close to that because it's just. And 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 ultimately, this is a a five to ten year mandate while we hopefully get the grant. I mean, an overlay is not gonna last that long, especially after the ice storm, it just. Every year we get a nice storm and more holes pop up. And so I I saw in the, in the department report that uh. Due to the inability to finish the the generator or. To finish the, the generator or full court basketball, that would free up about eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Just that cursory plant, so that's why I was interested how much. If we were to take that on, how much we could accomplish, and it sounds like we could do. That much and potentially even more. If, if everybody chose to.
I would say. Our street fund. With things like. Like we've come across today. Um, you know, here. Replacing a greater re, replacing a meter. Um, there in the greater block of North Main Street. And um. So flow line construction who we've contracted with to do some of that excavation work and to actually do some of that. Installation work. Um. Took the first part of blacktop off of where we were hoping to attach waterline into. Um, and uh, discovered an issue with our storm uh, system. Which kind of involved a bit, a bit of a. Void, a void, you know.
So sink, yeah.
It wasn't a sinkhole because there's eighteen, there's eighteen inches of material. So pavement and then, and then concrete.
So crushed pipe?
Actually, no, it's um, it's interesting, um, because our storm system, and I have a picture I can show you guys later, but. Um, has, you know, round um, concrete pipe. That comes along and then all of a sudden, there's a much bigger pipe. Um, than the concrete pipe was just sitting in. And so that allows for the system to back up and swirl around and do all kinds of things. Um, so it was a very interesting way that they have chosen to, and I'm not even gonna say connect the system.
Yeah.
So Ellen's been working on that uh, most of the day to day, um. Called into ODOT, so ODOT will be coming out to have a look see and very well maybe their issue. So we'll, we'll see how this goes, but. Waterline connection is still progressing. This may need to do just fine. The waterline that they're working on today.
Yeah, yeah, we just have to wait uh, before they can. Before they can tap in that new service line and run it, we gotta see what we're gonna do with. The storm line.
Yeah. Which is in the street, yep.
So what's needed, what's needed from council to make some determinations on the final ARPA funds?
Well, you know, we went to council before and said, hey, council, this is what we, what we think we'd like to spend money. Um, the generator for this building. Uh, and then the uh, sport court or basketball court. Um, we were able to determine, obviously it was gonna cost us more to do this sport court than what we had hoped. And so um, I know that we have had the conversation among staff. And when the time was appropriate, we would come to council and say, hey. We would like to spend the remaining portion of this ARPA fund, I think, on the paving down the. Around the, around the triangle. Around the bound. Um, because I think we can, we can definitely get that project done. And it'll create. I think a significant amount of goodwill. But um, it's, it's probably the best thing that we can do for the public. Right now, given, you know, the state of streets and the state of everything else. And then after we come to a conclusion on that project, who knows how much we'll have left. And then we can come up with some ideas about how to, maybe we can buy some trees, maybe we can buy some gravel and. Buy some park benches, maybe we can do a few other things in a few other portions of town. To just improve the quality of life.
Stop till then, they're gonna wait till next month is what you're telling, sorry, I sifted out in terrorist report.
No, I, no, I think we could, we could very easily do it right now.
Would it be wise to wait? I mean. And so try to see if the rail, railway has. Some, some, any funds to put towards it.
So the railroad is going to, going to go in with us on this part.
Right.
It's not completely just us. So uh, just kind of roll back, so a center section of paving between the railroad tracks, they owe. And then is it two or three feet on either side of the rail?
It's not very much, it's like two.
Two feet, yeah, so they're gonna be paying for the center of the rails. And then likely two feet on either side. So they're gonna be paying for that.
Right.
Irrespective of the grant number. Cause they.
But only, only at the. Only at the, the overlay depth, I mean, they're not, they're not doing like a. Like a rail crossing improvement, they're just.
No, because.
Busted asphalt and.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be doing the overlay, you know, right and, and then go back. And we hope to be able to do the full improvement with the grant.
Thanks, answer.
So do you need a motion from the council to, to do that instead?
A motion would be good, or even consensus, I think consensus would be just fine.
Okay.
I'm curious to everybody else, since I've been just pun intended railroad in the same ever since. Still baffled the basketball court costs fifty, over fifty grand.
Especially with the railway issue.
I know. I'm pretty excited to hear.
Alternatives to concrete. But. I'm fine since we can't. Figure that out to. Put the money towards the. Room, I guess, I mean.
Get the project done.
Yeah.
Get a project done and follow the back burner.
Make Ray happy.
Make Ray happy.
Happy, happy until, until people are going too fast past your house.
Well, I think I'm detecting a consensus to do as much as we can with that intersection with the ARPA funds, is that correct?
Yes.
If I misstated that, let me know, cause. You want. You want a thumbs up then, right?
Yep.
So. I'm good with it. Anybody object? And you have a consensus then?
Thank you.
Alan, when we update the arc master plan, we can ship the sport court into that. And hopefully still accomplish it at some point, right?
It goes.
Once it's in the plan.
Yep. Okay, is that all from the?
It's all for me.
Okay, I'm going to counselor reports and I'll start with council president, either if I have that was happening. Council Al, you wanna give us a health update or is that?
No.
That prohibited by HIPAA.
I don't know, I was feeling better, but now I am um, have to wear the back brace until the end of March solidly. If I'm upright, I have to have the back brace on. And then after I've been doing spine PT for a couple of weeks. And then I'll have a couple of months of leaning off of the back brace. And I got my cast off on Thursday, it was lovely, and then it hurt. Like hell for a couple of days. And I did spine, I did hand PT today and then I got a call. And saying surgery is gonna be Friday, so then I'm gonna go back into a. Soft cast for a couple of weeks and then it'll be another six weeks before I can actually do spine. Alright, I'll be doing spine and hand therapy the same time, so hopefully it'll all be done. Roughly at the same time, mid-April. So, yeah, that's right, I'm tired of being in the house, so I was happy to. Pete offered to come pick me up, cause I'm not driving, so. It's been a little bit of a challenge.
Sounds like you're.
I missed my, I missed my jobs, so I would like to be healed and back doing all of the things.
That you would.
Yeah, but that's all I got.
Council Donahue?
Um, basketball, back on the basketball court thing, uh. Is there any way we can do some kind of joint venture with the school and the tennis courts and get that thing back up and running? So Pete doesn't tear the ACL on it, he's out there playing pickleball. I don't know, don't we both start fun?
Talk with them, right, okay.
Instead of a branded concrete basketball court at your park?
One of the other fun things I do is I'm on this district budget committee. I think I know the answer ahead of time, but I'm.
I think they would be willing to grant permission, but probably off of funding.
Yeah.
Don't need this.
You know somebody on that.
I'm, I'm aware of a few people on the board, yes.
If they fulfill available birdie donations.
The tennis courts. No.
Okay. Anything else, council? Council Asor?
Uh. As our worldly citizen over here asks, is there any way, Alan, that we could probably put some uh, do not delve waste drains to stream?
Yeah.
Burners down, uh, there's some folks that are. Um, throwing cigarettes and whatnot down storm drains.
Yeah, you want them just on the cash basins or?
In front or on the curb, whichever.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe just a handful around town, downtown Coria or anything. Uh. My uncle saw the PD Cruiser over there in Hubbard the other day. When he was going to Portland, he works up there in Portland, and I was like. Wait, what? He's like, yeah, they were there a couple of days, I think, and I was like. Oh, okay, so did we, like with Jarvis, did we just assist for like a, a shift or two or something?
Yeah, two shifts.
Two shifts?
Yep.
Are they gonna reimburse us for that or?
Well, so I, I could throw them a bill, however, um, in my book it is better to be owed than to owe. And um.
Just was wondering, who's gonna pay for that?
Alright, well, just like, you know, with the, wherever we certainly didn't get full reimbursement for going up and working the, the canyon after fire.
Um, it's really important for us to help our neighbors.
Yep. Because they've already agreed all over themselves to offer to, to help us, so.
Oh yeah, especially with OCS, it's, I think, yeah.
Their patrol was effective, cause when I spotted him, like, the last thing I wanted was a local. PD and meat ticket in Hubbard.
That's why I said my uncle too, I was like, so did they pull you over, he's like, no, not this time.
So he stopped a lot of cars, he rode a bunch of trucks.
Yeah. Um. So as we were, you know, I was looking at that report, are we gonna? Have that uh, population study. Brought up with our water insurance. That's all I really have, um. I'm hearing really good things about the. Paving on the water street or the water project. A lot of folks were complaining about the cold patch and now they're like, oh, have to drive over and boom, 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 so. Very good job, very good job on that.
Okay, how's your thought?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Um. She already touched on a couple about reaching back out to the railroad to make sure we get the grant info. So that we can start trying to get the grant for the permanent funding, just knowing that that's years in the making. Um. And. I believe there's an update on our potential code amendment, Colby, for parking in yards.
Yeah, Karen informed me tonight that we did receive a grant to do some development code revisions, so we can work on that here shortly and that will.
I'm actually very happy. Um, I think this one goes to Alan, so we have those reflective pedestrian crossing, uh. They're kind of like plastic ballers, almost a flat signs, we got them by the post office and we have one up at the school. Uh, one of the schools being clipped. And so there's a chunk of it missing. Um. I was gonna ask two things, one, uh, if we replace it, can we move it about? Two feet further this way? So some of us that have crew cab trucks when we drop our kids off, don't have to drag a tire in the back to avoid hitting it. And uh.
By the school, right?
Yeah, the one right in front of the school. If somebody's pulling in and you're pulling out. And if you're in anything longer than a minivan, it's real hard to not clip.
Okay.
To, to not hit that sign.
Okay.
And uh, and then the other thing is, 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 would it, are we warranted putting one on the uphill side for the people that are cruising down the hill coming into town? Um. And then uh, the last one is. I know we, we have basically four automotive shops in town. Um. One, one of them was partially cleaned out and there's a lot of. Auction wrecked vehicles are quickly returning. I'll refer to it as that. Um, and obviously we have one downtown and, and I totally respect their business and the fact that vehicles need to sit while being repaired. But we have some that have been under tarps for. I think since most of us went to high school. Um. So what, what can we do? To prioritize and work in with the local businesses, I, I don't wanna just run out and. Start slamming code violations and tell everybody they need to put a thirty thousand dollar fence up, cause that's. Not neighborly, but what can we do to start working with some of these business owners to start cleaning some of the? I mean, we have vehicles that sit for. Two years. Right on Main Street. What, what, what can we do to start cleaning this up without being too much of a, you know. Burden upon the, the business owners?
We start the code enforcement process. It's laid out in the code. And business or not. They have responsibility. And we've, we've tried the A, we've tried the won't you please? And that's even a part of our code.
It, it would be nice to start prioritizing that a little bit, cause we have uh. A lack of effort. For keeping things tidy from multiple vendors, we'll put it that way.
We'll do our best.
I would, I'd appreciate some prioritization on that, that's the last thing I have.
I, I tried talking to one of the owners of one of those establishments and he told me to go talk to them.
Cool.
You told on, the one on North Main Street.
Mm-hmm. The owner told me to do something?
Yeah, the owner told me to go talk to him, rather than. The owner of the building. Didn't wanna go talk to him.
No, and, and.
Oh, now it makes sense.
Now that makes sense, yeah. He just bonded off.
And that's generally, you know, it's kind of like rental property in the north. Um, we haven't seen much success in the Illinois tenants. We just go right.
Yeah, cause obviously coming into town, we have a lot that's not screened. We have a lot not screened right here on Main Street and then. If you were to sit at the fire department, I think you would get an eyeful, so. Those, those would be probably the places I would start prioritizing.
Thank you for the input.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Hope?
Um. The only thing I have is our work session, uh, this over the weekend, I just was in my head working through the response from the engineer stating that. There's really no cost saving way to. Take. Update our plans without doing the whole thing over again, and the only thing I could think of is that. Going forward in the future, like if he's still, we've still retained. That firm as our engineer in ten years from now. It's gonna be the same, you know, whatever multiplication factor for ten years of inflation, that same cost. Where he's gonna, he's gonna be able to use his information, but he just isn't willing to stand. On another engineer's information. So I would have preferred him just saying. I won't, I won't use the info, I have to build my own, you know, background, but I still think it's. Uh, unfortunately for us, we have to, I guess, pay for it again. Uh, but anyway, I just, it's just. Yeah, like Monday all weekend, so. That's, that was the last all I said, so.
We, we are receiving an updated scope and P proposal from them though, based on the conversation and the reduction scopes that we discussed, right?
We'll talk, I'll just talk to Colby about that.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Hey, uh. Student counselor. Do you have anything for us?
I have a few things, I don't have a lot, um. So it's just some general updates for the district, um, first semester just finished, so we're rolling into the second semester right now. And one of our most recent. Announcements, this is pretty exciting, is that school lunches are free for all students in the entire district now, uh, which is kind of in a work in progress. Um, specifically for the high school, we're having a blood drive on March fourteenth, which is exciting too. So working with, uh, Cross on that. Um, and sports wise, um, the wrestling team and the swim team are both on their way to state the next week or two. And then the basketball teams are both in the playoffs right now. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. It's my turn. Uh. I, this last weekend, we had a very successful Volksfest. Uh, especially Saturday. Uh, we had a huge crowd on Saturday. Uh. The proceeds, the net proceeds from that go to a lot of good causes, like scholarships, flower baskets. Fourth of July parade and fireworks. And the fountain operation and maintenance, which continues to rise every year, but, um. It was, uh, it's like everything around here, it's an all volunteer effort, and thanks to everybody who worked, uh. The event, it was very successful and people had a good time. And, uh, so. Who goes to the chamber for putting that on? Uh. Another thing, um. I've had really good, positive responses from people in the public. People that went to the Volksfest about the. Our town article and articles on our, my state of the city, uh. Uh, address, a- and then also the city newsletter, so thanks to the staff for getting it in the city newsletter. I had, I had one guy who really came up to me and thanked me for it. Uh, and, uh, which I thought was nice. Uh, I had more than one person, but this one guy was very thankful, and he said, especially because. You, you, you gave kudos to Ray, so. Gave it away, and, and, and I'm not sure if the positive responses were. Because of what was in it, or the fact that I said I wasn't running for mayor again, but, but anyway. If they said it was good, I, I took it, so anyway. Um, and the only other thing I have is, I got a, I, a text today about someone who. Said that Comcast has done some damage to sidewalks, and are they going to be responsible for repairing them? Do we have a?
Yeah, so.
And I don't know where those are, so I, it's, it was just a.
So there's, there's one spot in particular, um, where there was damage done. And I took Comcast there, and I showed them, and. They swear up and down that they didn't, they didn't even have their equipment there, so. Um, that's been kind of an ongoing struggle with them, um. But as far as anything else, I'm, I'm not aware of, everything that I caught them breaking, um, they repaired it and chipped, chipped concrete.
Okay.
And then any, any holes or anything, they, they're replacing the whole entire pan.
And I'll ask for some clarification, but I.
Are you talking about Sagrada Circle?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I did get a. Okay, thank you. And that's all I have, so. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order? No one jumping up and down, we are here.
Sorry, I forgot one more thing.
Oh.
We have a local homeschool group. Uh, tour our treatment plant there at City of Salem, so if you guys are ever interested, City of Kaiser is actually doing. A tour at our treatment facility as well, but if you guys, uh, ever are interested, you guys are more than welcome to. For the wastewater treatment out there in Salem. It's pretty cool, a lot of folks think, well, I just thought you guys just. Got it in and got it out, and didn't really do much to, a little bit more involved, so. If you guys would like, you get tours.
Are you operating those ones from above from there?
Uh, no, we're gonna be too busy during the halftime.
Okay, now we're a jerk.
It's actually, you could see it.